I'd like to call the order, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Supervisors Workshop. If Mr. McClung will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Cox with your indication, that'd be great.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, my father, thank you for another wonderful day in Palatán. Help us move through forces of this, Mr. Seacare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, changes in the order of presentation? Hearing any motion to approve the agenda? All of them say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Can you administer updates?
Just one real quick. So I want to introduce some new number of staffs that's sitting behind me. Parker Neave is our new athletics coordinator. So new to the role, not new to the county now. Glad to have Parker with us.
Well, does Parker go ahead and speak?
I know this was happening.
If it helps, I used to coach Parker years ago in baseball. Makes you feel old.
Get a little bit on the speech. A bunch of time there. Okay. Brett, you got any other stuff?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. That'll bring us to our first public comment period, where anyone in the public would like to address the board. You're speaking as an individual. You have three minutes. You're speaking on behalf of a group. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address. Anyone on the line, Brett?
No.
Okay, we'll close the public comment period. We'll bring us into...
So the first item is we've talked about some prior work, some budget, the Turner Concessions project, as well as the expansion renovations that Company One. Both of those have some cost increases over what was put in CIP or what was put in the budget. So we've got some, both will prepare with pen on those gaps and get those projects moving forward to construction. So we'll have the presentation to just go through some of the history on those projects, how they came to be where they are today, and our approval to fund them. And if we get consent to move forward with that, we'll have to schedule a public hearing before the November meeting. And then you could act on it at that time. So not looking for approval tonight, just getting the okay to go ahead and put that on a future agenda.
Okay. For the presentation, you guys will... Phil, we need Fire Department first.
Yeah, better we start with something one.
We met back in September of twenty twenty-two, and this is a quick review of what, a quick history of where we came from and where we're at today. Back in the mid nineteen-sixties, obviously, we had this, on the location that we currently have a fire station now, we had a Palatan Emergency Crew, and that was basically built by the neighborhood and the community. And then as time went on, we replaced it with this building in two thousand and one, which is an eighty-five-hundred-square-foot building, and that's what we currently have. But one of the things that was done with this building, the land was donated by, it was owned by the volunteers, and it was donated to the county, and between the volunteers and the Timberlake family, land was donated for the entrance to the Fattin Creek Park as well. When we did this originally, we did it as a group of volunteers creating a building that we, we had a million dollars, and this is what we built with that. And it's unfortunate, we had planned for a slightly larger, roughly about thirteen-thousand-square-foot building, and we cut it down as volunteers in the fire department and to make the building fit our budget. And now we have outgrown that. Our life has changed dramatically with the advent of career staff, twenty-four-seven, and also the building was built more as a residential building versus a residential home versus a commercial building to last, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years. Kind of reviewed some of that. And now what we're looking at is, as the, as we've come and the board has graciously looked at our, putting an addition on the building, we're going to renovate the existing building and then add on. We're going to add on roughly forty-five-hundred square feet and renovate roughly thirty-five-hundred square feet. And, but the cost estimates that we're getting, we're getting in the neighborhood of, if I'm not mistaken, four, a little over four hundred dollars a square foot, and we're coming in at roughly a significant amount of money, probably close to four million dollars. So if you look at this, we're, we looked at our neighbors, anything that's been done in the Richmond area, Chesterfield Fire and EMS, when this slide was originally done, that fourteen-thousand-square-foot building came in at eight million dollars. That building's now being completed for that much money. That's down in Matoka. That is just the building itself. There's no site work, no A and E. So that actually, the cost of that project was closer to twelve million dollars. And then the, and as you can see, over the course of time and inflation, we're getting crazy numbers with billing costs, and it's just, I think, kind of a sign of our times these days. Hanover Fire and EMS, eleven million dollars, Charles City is probably, and I, they're actually getting ready to open in November, or we'll go down and take a look at that, but that, their square footage is more in line with what we're looking at. But it's an all-new building.
Want me to talk about this one?
Sure. Or better, Charlotte, whichever one.
Phil and I were, we were talking earlier this week about when the project originated in the CIP. You can, you can read about discussions of the firehouse expansion dating back to two thousand and eleven, but it first shows up in the two thousand and fifteen, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen CIP. And in that year, there's a hundred and forty thousand dollars that Phil was funded for what was termed a Phase One, and then two-point-four and change, ASQ for the expansion. And then as you work your way down the middle column there, you can see how that budget amount changed year over year. In fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the ASQ stayed the same, but between fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, it increased to two-point-six million dollars. That's for the construction cost. And then ultimately, the project was funded in the fiscal year twenty-three, CIP, one-point-six million. That was the construction cost. In fiscal year twenty-two, the three-hundred thousand had been approved for A and E. I think we got one more slide for you.
Yep.
So this budget takes a look at that fiscal year twenty-three approval, and it compares what was approved in the fiscal year twenty-three CIP with what the architect's opinion of probable construction cost is, and you see those values in the middle column there. And so I'll end there, looking at four-point-two million dollars and change is their opinion of probable construction cost. So the shortfall amount there is in your bottom right-hand column at two-point-three million dollars and change. Now, this looks at, this is a budget just based on that fiscal year twenty-three CIP item. Charlotte, she can give you a detail that goes back the ten or so years of the ins and outs in that account.
Sure. I'll take out a non-screen because I'm not that technologically savvy. But I did a history on kind of when it started back not long after I got here, which was two thousand and fifteen. So we, the project cost, including that one-forty, was the two-million-six-fifty. We funded the one-forty. In two thousand and sixteen, the project cost was changed by thirty, reduced by thirty thousand. Two thousand and seventeen, it kind of stayed flat to give us the total project of two-million-six-twenty with the thirty thousand off. And then in fiscal year eighteen, we increased it to the project cost two-hundred thousand. Still, nothing's been funded yet. This is just in the outer years, preparing. Two thousand and nineteen, erase it again, a hundred and ninety thousand for a total of three-million-ten. And that, that does include the one-forty. I'm doing all the costs together. Nothing kind of moved. But in twenty-two, we, we reduced the total cost by a million dollars. I don't know why, or I don't remember. It was a while ago, so this is just the numbers. And, but we appropriated the three-hundred thousand to add to the one-forty to get the A and E kind of started. And then the remainder, one million, one-point-six million was appropriated in two thousand and twenty-three. So the total project cost, though, is two-million-ten-thousand dollars with A and E construction and everything. But it started out at two-point-six, went up to three million, and then dropped to two-million-ten. So that's kind of the history of when it started in fifteen and where we landed in twenty-three.
Number to, just to reiterate, to be clear, too, this is the probable cost. It's not the actual bid. Well, with this, we'll put this out to bid as possible. It could come in higher, it could come in lower, but the engineers feel fairly confident this is a strong, accurate number to move forward with towards bid.
Any comments?
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Carrick.
Oh, what are, iterate again, what are we getting for this?
We're getting, we're getting an addition of new construction of roughly forty-five-hundred dollars, which is essentially, on the western end of the building, we'll get a kitchen, a day room, a gym, and a meeting room for the community. And on the eastern end, we're going to make that end of the building a little bit larger. It's just, it's not necessarily all new square feet, but, because we have some at that end, but just adding to that. It'll be turnout gear storage, decon area for our turnout gear, and a shop area, and a place to hopefully keep items like lawn mowers, weed eaters, and items like that. And then the original part of the building that we saw will be renovated into bunk rooms, which will end up with ten bunk rooms, three restrooms for, more for employee use, two restrooms for the public use that coincide with the, with the meeting room, and two offices for volunteer staff and one for career staff.
And you have here furniture budget for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know what in God's name you could buy for furniture for close to a hundred and fifty. That's a really nice bed for...
I understand, and you're looking at beds, desks, anything furniture-wise that's going there. The tables, anything that you can think of, lamps, anything that will go into a, into your own home, chairs in a day room, kitchen table, chairs, all that stuff. And, and when you say, and that's the probable cost based off the architect. One of the things, the only thing I can throw out there that Company One wants to do is Company One wants to raise money to furnish as much of the building as they can on their own, but that's, that's to be determined.
And what I don't understand is, it seems to me like we're doing this backwards. It's like we're throwing money at a project that we have no idea, we've yet to put it out to bid, we've yet to get a cost on furniture, and here we are, just taking and, you know, dumping more money into it. I mean, before we do that, why don't we actually get a cost of what it's going to be? I mean, maybe I'm going, looking at it a little bit backwards, but it's sort of like, we've been speculating all along, and now we're still speculating, and we're hoping that we're accurate. I mean, as you guys know, I was kind of against this from the beginning, because it just seemed like this is one of those projects that escalates, escalates, escalates. And before you know it, if we do this for this company, what's the, every other fire station company going to want? And then, you know, because the latest in grades is always...
So I'll add a little bit to that, because I tend to agree with you. I would rather have a bid on it, but when we, when we got this, this cost estimate, one of the things, we sat down as a group, and that was, the group was facilities, the county administrator, and the fire and rescue admin, and our volunteer partners at Company One. And what we wanted to do was, we wanted to, because if we sent it out to bid, and a company, Company X, Y, and Z bid on the project and spent sixty days working on bidding a project, and then the county goes, and they put a lot of man-hours, a lot of time and effort into it, and then the county goes, we're just not going to do that and move along with that project. We wanted a commitment from our, our group that we met together, a commitment from the board that we're still behind this project. Before we, we sent it out to bid, we wasted contractors' time and efforts, and then our, our reputation as a, as a builder in the community in Palatán is, we didn't want to ruin that. We wanted to show that we're committed to the project and we're going to move forward.
And one thing, I don't know, when you guys are considering construction costs, I know you use a lot of kind of relative analogies to Chesterfield and Rico. I mean, I think nobody needs to look any further than kind of the brick mausoleum down in Chesterfield County, you know, that costs for taxpayers a good chunk of money. And at the end of the day, that doesn't put out one more fire than a metal building or a building that has siding or something else. So I don't know, when we're looking at this, if, what kind of addition we're considering, if we're considering a little less material cost.
I think you're absolutely right. And if you, if you look at that and now throw out, in Midlothian, they had to meet in an architectural style, so it is a beautiful building, but that's the architectural style of Midlothian. You take that same building, you put it in Matoka that they're building currently, getting ready to complete, it looks totally different, but the cost is still relatively the same. One of the things about our building currently is a, it is a, just like you said, it's a metal building, but the, when that building was constructed, the planning commission, and I don't think it went to the board, but I think the planning commission wanted a brick veneer building that represents the county well in the, in the village. And so we're meeting that same architectural style to enhance the village area, and that's what historically has been done, and that's what we're continuing to do. So I don't think we're going above and beyond, other than we want a building that doesn't cost the taxpayers again in twenty years. We want to, we want the building to last thirty, forty, or fifty years, and we're not revisiting this again. I hope, I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Do you have a timeline on this, in terms of you're going, if we support you, then you're going out to bid?
Correct.
When would we start construction? Let's assume there are no more hiccups on money, and you don't have to come back.
I would assume that a bid process, and Will might be able to help me out, probably sixty to ninety-day process?
Yeah, yeah, we're, the DJG, the architect, is there at the final design stage. So they're ready to release construction blueprints, you know, and then we would, we could put the project out to bid, and then the next big factor is plugging into a construction schedule. You know, we would, we would select a firm, and they would, they would plug us in where they had availability. So that'd be the, that'd be the driver.
So would we, in our architect?
Late twenty-five?
No, sir. I would, I would say that you would see construction, if we move forward now, and we, even if we went ninety days, we'd be the first of the twenty twenty-four. If a contractor was available within sixty or ninety days, then obviously we'd start moving. Our, our architect thinks this is a year-long project done in two phases. We'd do the new construction portion of it. We'd move into the new construction portion of it. The renovation would be the second phase, and, but that timeframe would be significant, significantly less than what the outer construction is.
Twenty twenty-five, at some point, would it say we come on?
I would say so, yes, sir. Thank you.
So on this one, how we propose to fund that gap, we've got about one-point-six in ARPA money remaining, and that's, you know, at some point, use it or lose it, so we do need to, whether it's this or something, at some point, get that spent. We don't want to return it to the federal government. Then we've got almost two-hundred thousand available cash proffers. We've got three-hundred-eight thousand of our capital maintenance reserve. That would, that would still leave us a fairly healthy capital maintenance reserve balance. So that's, that's how we would propose to fund it, if you will, in favor of that, or at least in favor enough of it to schedule it for public hearing in November. Move on to Turner, or any other feedback or questions on Company One?
I've got some questions. How many bunks do we have in that station currently?
We have two rooms that act as dormitory-style bunkers. And they have bunk beds in them, so like, the male room has four sets of bunk beds in it, the female, I believe, has two.
So we have six.
Bunk beds, yes. But these are dormitory, two rooms, dormitory-style, so it's just an open room like this with just bunk beds in them.
And you're going to go to...
Individual. If you've been to, I don't know if you had the opportunity to tour Huguenot, and Huguenot, where the living quarter says each of them are individual rooms, so for, for our firefighters' health and safety or sleep and being able to not necessarily have to listen to Will Snorer or Phil Snorer, and, you know, Will stays up till midnight, I hear the ready-to-be clock, so kind of the trend, the national trend for fire departments.
How many full-time firefighters work at one career fighter?
Career, right now, we have three during the day, from seven to seven, seven AM to seven PM, and then one from seven PM till seven AM. And we have volunteers that, that will be in the evening.
How many of the stations does the county own? There's five stations.
Five stations, two.
How many? We own one?
Two. Do you own Company One?
Company One.
And Company Two?
And Company Two.
Yes, sir.
This is a lot of money.
I agree.
Not that one-point-six million wasn't a lot of money, or two-point-four million, two-point, two-billion-ten wasn't a lot of money. This is, this is a considerable change in this for me. And no disrespect to anyone in the fire and rescue, I mean, I think you guys do it from hand to scum. I think that we are infinitely grateful for what the volunteers do. But when I look at this, and I, and one thing that kind of came up to me, you know, the Charles City Station was ten-thousand square feet, and it was four-point-one million dollars. Ms. Carrick has heard me say, I know, as everybody else, we spent a thirty-five-million-dollar deal on a school building that doesn't teach anybody, and we spent four million on a firehouse that doesn't put a fire out. And that's kind of where I'm at with this now, because I'm looking at this thing, and I'm saying, you know, are we going to get to fires faster? Are we going to get to people quicker? Are we going to have a much better response time? And I don't think we are, personally. I mean, I'm not, it's not my business, but it's your business. You're the expert in it. But I'll tell you what I am thinking. If the county's going to invest four million dollars, taxpayers' money, I think that there should just be a new fire station built, say in the Jefferson area, and give us better coverage and more, and a much rapid, much more rapid response time in that area, because there's nothing there now, and there's some significant subdivisions there. You have Ashton, you have Oakley, you have Tillman's Farms, and those are, that's a, that's a large number of hunting there. And, and, you know, we've got four that's got to come down, and we've got one that's got to come across five-twenty-two. And if we can build, I don't know that ten-thousand's the right number in terms of square feet in Charles City, but if we're in Palatán County, we go to five-thousand square feet. And I'm not a big fan of comparing Palatán County to Chesterfield or Henrico in the square foot, but in my mind, I took the slide that was up there that said eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars a square foot in Chesterfield. It was the number two that was listed on the presentation. And we built a five-thousand-square-foot fire station at eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars a square foot. That's four-point-one million dollars. I'm kind of of that opinion, and maybe it might be a better way, and maybe we just need to look at it more to know what is the right thing to do here. But this is a significant increase in money, two-point-two million dollars shortfall. I don't even know if I like the word shortfall, to be honest with you, but four-point-two million in terms of adding... When we had a meeting workshop on September the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, new construction was forty-seven-hundred square feet in the renovation space that we were going to, the existing space that we were going to renovate was forty-one-hundred. The cost was three-hundred-and-three dollars a square foot and a hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot. When I look at those things, and I look at where we are now, I'm just like, why don't we just do another firehouse? Why don't we have another place that puts us closer and gives us the ability to have a much quicker, faster response time? I, I think to spend four million dollars and we're going to get ten individual rooms, I understand the safety and health of firefighters and first responders and that. Four million dollars, you could hire some more firefighters also, career-wise. I, I do believe, I don't know statistics, but I do believe Palatán County Fire and Rescue does a great job in responding right now. And to spend four million more dollars, that's like eight, eight, eight more pennies, nine more pennies on the, on the tax rate in this area? I'm, I'm probably leaning against doing this, in my opinion. I'm not saying I've made a final decision. I think maybe more information is needed, but I kind of think maybe we just need to look at another fire station, another location, as opposed to making a bigger one and putting a gym in it and having a day room and a kitchen. I remember reading the article about, you know, the, I guess it's the carcinogens that come on from firefighters' equipment that they wear and how that, you know, creates a health hazard. And so I understand that, and I get you, you know, we're going to have more storage space, but I want to be able to put out a fire, and I want to be able to get to those people's house really fast. I think that everybody here has that same goal in mind of creating a public safety environment for our citizens. I think everybody has that. But when we're going to talk about four million dollars now, I don't, I'm not a big believer in kicking the can down the road. I, I'm a doer and do something, but you can analyze it to death sometimes and not get anywhere. But at four million, I think, I know I voted to do the last increase in September, but we're probably going to lose me on this one going forward at this much, this much money. That's all I've got on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
There are some good questions. Phil? When we had the numbers that related to the previous estimate, that was how long ago?
At least a year.
Fair. What was the basis for those numbers a year ago?
That, that was a best guess prior to plans being completed.
So we didn't go anywhere, we can't peg it to anything to the architect like he's doing it now based on current costs, but you're telling me this was back-of-the-envelope, lemon's guess as to what it might cost?
Yes, sir.
So we didn't have good figures, did we?
Yes, sir.
All right, shame on us. So we didn't know. We made the best guess. So now we're... So now we're looking at something that's coming in, it's been mentioned twice now, that it's almost doubled. Well, there's reasons for that. I think one of the reasons is we may have started from not-so-good numbers. Second reason is Mrs. Carmack will attest to, we found out down at the Richmond Regional Transportation Plan Organizations, projects were coming in, in one case over in Goodson, twice as much as what we originally planned. And when we got down to trying to understand why these projects were coming in, it was really three things. First thing was we didn't do the cost estimation correctly, or maybe the best way that we should have, we were doing it two different ways. So that was one thing. Second thing was supply chain problems. The third thing was inflation. All those contributed to overruns. So I'm just wondering aloud, could that not be the case today?
The best example I can give you right now is in 2019, the, the board approved the purchase of a fire engine. We purchased two fire engines at roughly $529,000. We're looking at those fire engines four years later, that's identical, made by the same people, coming in at close to a million dollars. These things I would, could never have ever guessed would have happened in my lifetime to see how much the cost of building, how the cost of construction of apparatus. It's, it's unbelievable, our, what our industry is, is seeing for, for cost increases. Our turnout gear in one year with just our pants and our coat has gone from 20, $2,000 or actually $2,200 to $3,500. We, we, I, I just, I can't, I can't buy it any cheaper from anyone. The prices all come in from every manufacturer, do the same thing. Those are things that are completely out of our control and our industry is just, it's, there's no control over it. And those are just the examples that I can give that, that, that what we depend on, our turnout gear that keeps us safe in fires and our apparatus that takes us, takes us to the fires, that's just gonna be a cost that's gonna continue to, to, uh, impact the, the citizens of the county for, you know, forever. So.
At least for the foreseeable future. The second thing that comes out is requirements. When we came up with that cost assessment and the renovation and the addition to fire station one, we had requirements, didn't we? In terms of what we wanted to do and what was, I believe, generic to a fire station. Is, is that correct? So we didn't, we didn't go off and redesign something. I mean, this was.
Yes, sir.
Because to the point that was made earlier, uh, we ought to have, you know, a template, so to speak. You know, given that, you know, there's gonna be nuanced differences like in the village, you know, up here in the county. And for example, that you brought forward in Chesterfield County, Midlothian, you obviously couldn't put a metal building down there. And it's quite glacial.
It is. It's stunning, Doug.
But we have requirements that were used. So we didn't do anything out of the ordinary here. What we're doing is pretty much what you would see in any fire station today if you went in. You know, with the, with the separate rooms, I mean, that's pretty much standard because I remember when we had this discussion when we came into office, I went over and visited myself and I saw that the bunks were side, almost side by side.
Yes, sir.
Which was even different from the World War II barracks that I was in basic training. They were least spacing. But these were side by sides, not individual rooms, but side by side. So where we're going to is doing what everybody else is doing and going to the separate rooms. So the existing facilities didn't work in those cases. You didn't have the right showers, bathing equipment.
Correct.
You didn't have the exercise equipment.
Correct.
You didn't have the storage equipment for, for other things.
For turnout gear and, and decon area, correct.
So the reason we went forward with the renovation addition, y'all have response times that go ahead to cover the county. To the question of why didn't we build it in Jefferson or why don't we move to Jefferson? Is that a good recommendation in your opinion? Do we, do we need to do that?
And, uh, I don't know what a good answer is because we have holes and, and we have, we, we've looked at the county and, and we have, I see four holes in the county that, deal with response time. Mr. Byler is absolutely 100% right. That is one of them, that intersection of 522 and 711. The other one is because of the growth along Route 60, uh, our, the vast majority of our responses are on the Route 60 corridor. And so there's an area at Red Lane and Route 60 that, uh, is less than, is more than five miles away from any fire station. So that's another soft spot, so to speak, in the county. The Founder's Bridge area from the, coming from Company Four at Fine Creek or Company Two at Huguenot going to, to the Founder's Bridge area, that, uh, that's also another area that, you know, in the future we'll, we'll be looking at. And then in the southern area, as Chesterfield grows out Route 360 and Powhatan comes into 360 and then, uh, our people spread into Palatine on the southern end of the county off of, off of Clayville, Genito and that area, that's gonna be another very soft spot for us. So those are the, the areas right now.
As you said, they gotta, they gotta build the extension first, right?
Oh, it's kind, it'll, it'll come, but that's, if you see the growth out Route 6, Route 360, that growth is coming and that is gonna affect Palatine as well. And it's gonna come out Genito Road and then down to Dorset. And so that's gonna be another area that response times are a big deal for us. And it'll, it'll be a spot that'll have to cover at one point.
Yeah, I think the question on the table is, are we, is it a good expenditure of funds to renovate the existing station where it is in the village? Or move that station and build a new station? Now, is the new construction cost per square foot cheaper or is it the same?
It's, it's probably gonna be higher because we have renovation costs in ours that's gonna keep ours lower than building a whole new building and less site work as well. But in my opinion, getting our buildings right, Huguenot was a project that was done well. Getting our Company One done well and let's get it behind us and have it for another, you know, three or 40 years. And then as we build into the county with our growth, with our comprehensive plan, then we'll, we'll expand to other fire stations as, as, as we all see fit and.
If you look at the plan today and you got the coverage today, is one still a requirement for the plan regardless of the expansion? Will one still be needed to provide the coverage?
Absolutely.
Okay. So you want still need it, right? Well, we build another one someplace, you want still need one?
100%.
Okay. That's my questions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Talking about the concept of another station somewhere, uh, and we're talking about for footage.
How many?
Let's talk about equipment for a new fire station. You just mentioned two engines, uh, that you just bought them now a million bucks apiece.
Yes, sir.
So we have to have, well.
We have to put a fire engine in it, we have to put a tanker and most likely we would put an ambulance in it as well.
Okay, so we're just, just for those three things, we're?
We're close to $2 million.
Okay.
And then.
No, that's just the starts.
That's just the start. And we haven't put a person in yet. That's a reoccurring cost. Because just because we've built a, a fire station doesn't mean it's gonna be staffed by volunteers. All our, most of our, I think all of our fire stations had originally started as a concept of the community coming together as volunteers and, and doing it. But if we go out and build one, we'll probably have to staff it because we might not necessarily have a volunteer base that will support that new fire station. But when we do that, we'll have to add people as well.
That's three shifts, not one person, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if it gets, this gets much more complicated and much more expensive than just talking about the cost of square footage cost of building. That, that's my only point is.
Correct.
If you, if you can find the land.
Correct. And, and we have a proper piece of property in front of Tillman's, but it's an awkward shake that we probably wouldn't be able to build a fire station off of with a little additional land that, that wouldn't, it would be a nice, that would be an ideal location. We'd love to have one there in the future, but it, it just comes with those other costs. Agreed.
How many people? I know obviously each night you have one full-timer that works 7:00 to 7:00, he's spending the night. How many volunteers on average do you have spending the night there?
I don't know off the top of my head, but, uh, we have duty crews that will range between three and, and, and probably seven people with, uh, probably two to three. They stay more overnight during the weekends than they do during the week.
So on average you have three to five, maybe spending the night, three to five? So I guess my point being is you're having 10 bedrooms. And, and I understand it's for growth, but you know.
So.
And I, I don't mean, I, I, what I'm gonna say isn't gonna sound like what I'm gonna say it. It's not cataclysmic that you have three to five people in two separated, in two bunk houses right now. It's not, is.
It depends on the situation.
Do you know what I mean?
Uh, it, individual bunk rooms, it, it's just, it's a, it's a concept that works really good, especially as our, as we have males and females and, and people working and living together for 24 hours. Separate bedrooms is just the best thing, I think, in the long run for everyone in the county. I think that's the safest way to say it. And you're absolutely right. Today we opened that building and we have 10 rooms and we only have maybe three or four people staying there. That's, you're absolutely right. But as we look at that and the growth of the county, when the county does grow in, in 20 years and we have three crews there, a crew to run a fire engine, a crew to run a ladder company and then an, an ambulance crew, we're looking at probably eight to nine people there. And that's what, it, it's coming our way. We're gonna keep volunteers absolutely as long as we can, but we need to plan for the future because we don't wanna be in a position we are in today that we created in 2000.
And one last point and then I'll wrap it up. You know, and it's been said that we're doing this for our volunteers, you know, to, to make volunteers, you know, retain them, recruit them, et cetera.
That is a part of, yes, ma'am.
I wonder, um, is there something else? Would we be better off? I know currently right now they get a tax break on their personal property. They have not even paid personal property. I think we would still end up ahead. You know, is there other benefits we can give to these guys instead of spending 4.2 million dollars on an addition that, you know, like we've all agreed and then put out one.
There is, there is some limits that's set by the tax code that if you give them over $600, now they're independent contractors working for the county. It, it, those, there's just some things that are completely out of our control because tax law says different and then, then they become employees. And, and so it's kind of a delicate balance with volunteers. And, you know, with, like our career staff can't volunteer in our county because federal law says so.
Right.
So we have some, some stipulations. The board is incredibly generous to our volunteers and, and they, that definitely appreciate it. But I, I, I'm sure we're always open to whatever we can do to help to, to encourage it more to volunteer to do this in the future, but I can't guarantee it.
One question. Yes, sir. Um, square footage cost, construction cost, what was that number again? Four, four and some?
I wanna say that was, was, I, I can't remember.
What was a, what was, what was it for the architect's estimate that you said? Cause you gave us the range in Chesterfield. What was the architect's estimate for square footage for?
I don't remember. I can tell you at 4.2 million. If you're doing 4,700 square foot of new construction, that's $910 a square foot. If you add the other 4,100 of renovation to it, then that becomes $486 a square foot. If you use the 4.2.
If you merge the two.
Right.
The new and the renovations together, it's around 400 and something.
You got it.
But your, your estimates are based on only new construction?
No, it's new and renovation.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, but I thought the ones that you showed in Chesterfield.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
So I wanna go apples to apples.
Of course.
To your point. So if it's X in Chesterfield for new and it's a novel figure over here in Palatine that's renovation and new combined, wouldn't we want to know and break those out and be able to have something to compare renovations and renovations and new with new with the two, two localities and going down the strata?
And, and we might be able to find something like that, but there's not.
Yeah, cause every, every renovation's gonna be different from based on requirements for the square footage.
Correct. And, and I just, uh, I just don't know, uh, how many renovation projects are going in the Richmond metro area? A lot of it's new construction. Uh, city of Richmond tore down a fire station on Carey Street and redubbed it.
So the only thing we've got, going back to Mr. Byler's point, if you combine the two, is 486.
486.
Which is within the range of new construction in Chesterfield, the lower end.
The new construction that I worked, my number's also using the 5,000 square foot new station site.
I was going for the.
Was, was $820 a square foot. That was the number. Can you guys put that presentation back over there in the back? Yeah. It shows the, the Chesterfield numbers that were up there, please?
One first line.
Yeah, it was $820 a square foot, um, for the 15,000 square foot, which I guess was, where is this? 15,000 square foot in the design phase, the only cost anticipated 12, 3, $820. And I just used that number in, in, and I think Jefferson, I, I agree with you, you know, there's holes, I get it. And, and, and Jefferson is one, if I, if I ask the question, um, not to change the subject, but now I'm not gonna go down this road with this on this. That's a growing area or has grown. If I look in, in the, in the, in the Company One area, um, which is like, let's say Scottville, I mean, that's grown immensely. But you know, and, and you're gonna have over in District Two in Chesterfield, cause I know that's coming much faster than anybody even talks about, brings, comes about. I don't, I wanna look down the road like you're saying. I don't wanna spend $4 million. And you made a comment there when Mr. Williams said, "We need Company One in the future." I'm not saying we don't need Company One. My question is, why do we need to expand Company One into the future? Because if we expand Company One into the, right now, we, we do this, 4 million, in 60 months, five years, are we gonna come back and say, you know, we got a lot more activity in Tillman and, and Ashton, we got a lot of activity. There's a 200 acre farm that's just been sold and being divided up, uh, in, in, in District Two. Are we gonna need to put a new fire station in there? And I'm not saying, I mean, me, I, I'm not into the mausoleums. I understand what Chesterfield did with, with the Midlothian and the structure and the aesthetics and matching up to what the village area is and all of that. I know what the previous station looked like in Palatine County. When, when it was four doors and a cinder block building and the, and the room on the left was tile like that right there. You know, and, and, and they would have their meetings in the podium up there, you know, with the vol, all volunteers. I just don't wanna, and, and I think it's a huge decision. I mean, it's, it's, it's a place where the county's growing, we've got a lot more people. I'm not saying we don't need to expand Company One, but I'm, I'm not sure we need to expand it to this degree. If you wanna put in, uh, private rooms, individual rooms, I'm probably gonna be okay with that. The problem, heaven, is, is the $4 million and then when I look at it from the cost of $820 a square foot. And, you know, that's, that's a lot to go into an area where there's not gonna be any, aesthetic expectations necessarily. I mean, we wanna have something that's nice and all of that, but, and I know the property you're talking about, that's probably not gonna work for a fire station where everything that I've heard from you guys in the past over there. But, um, I, I just, I, when I look at this, and I'll come back to one more thing, this started in 2015. This is 2015. This is twenty-twenty-three. I think that's ridiculous. I, I, this, there's, how can you have a, a guesstimate, and I'll just say it was an educated guesstimate, a hypothesis that came out there in twenty-fifteen, that probably involves some people that's not here today, you know, even, not even in the county today, that come up with a number, and then that number fluctuates up and down, all, all over the place. And it's like your, your engines, your tankers, everything you're buying, your equipment, they're not gonna go down in price.
Yes, sir.
I, I get that, I understand it. My problem is, I can't see at this point, spending four-point-one million dollars at this location, when we've got three-hundred-and-fifty, and that's just a number now, three-hundred-and-fifty homes that's just come into play into the Jefferson area, or if we go to Founder's Bridge and down there, or if we go to District Two and over there. And eventually, the western part of the county, Fire Station Three and Five, they're gonna come into play. I, I'm just of the opinion, I think I'd have a satellite location at this point, but I'll go back to exactly what Mr. Williams pointed out. If we get bad information going in, we're gonna have bad information coming out, which will take me right back to Ms. Carmine. What's the, the cost before we get into, and I heard what you said, you know, let's figure that out so we have a great reputation and all that with Powhatan County and building and all. This is a have-to, we have to do this. We're, we're not gonna skirt the issue of a fire station, whether we put it all in Company One and nothing ten miles from there down at Jefferson, and then in five years come back and say, well, we need to put something there. I, I don't have a crystal ball for that, but I think if we're gonna do four million, I'd rather, and I get the fact that, you know, you're gonna have to put employees there, you're gonna have to buy equipment to put in there, but how much do you have to put in there? I'd rather have one engine get to my house on fire in Tillman Farms within two minutes, maybe, than waiting on the others to get maybe, I don't know, seven or eight minutes. What can happen every time? That's just my struggle with, do we, do we spend the money at this location, or do we look for another spot? And then maybe slow the process down a little bit, but it's what's, what are we gonna have in ten years from now, fifteen years from now?
And, and I, I don't disagree with you at all, but one of the things that when we look at the ten-year capital plan, we had put a fire station in the future back a few years ago, and it was removed for whatever reason. But when we start looking at capital projects this fall, and we are looking at a fire station somewhere in the next ten years in Powhatan, and it's not gonna be four million dollars, it's gonna be the twelve to fifteen million dollars. And, and it's just, it's, it's, the cost is gonna, and it's gonna continue to rise if it continues like it is now, even if it's four or five percent, it's still gonna continue to rise. So it's, wherever we go, we're just still, it's gonna be a significant burden to the taxpayer.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
But it's not gonna be a four-million-dollar station. I, I can almost, I, I feel very certain, I can say that we will not be able to buy property, engineer it, and build it for four million dollars.
Well, in eight years, the estimate went from two million to four-point-two million. I, I, I get that, it's all gonna go up. No doubt, it will.
Absolutely.
Not arguing that point. I'm just not sure that, from my perspective, I wanna put four million in an existing eighty-eight-hundred-square-foot fire station. It's not, it's not where I'm at.
I understand.
Yes, oh, yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Carmine.
I have a slightly different view of growth than the one you just gave. We haven't built a large subdivision in over ten years.
Say that again? Say that a little bit louder?
And our comprehensive plan doesn't contemplate that we're going to do it. What I do see, what we already have approved is Mr. Potter's Triplex apartment complex, and of all of the public hearing projects that we're going to have, our own sixty and all of them would be handled by Station One. We are seeing a lot of growth in the village and areas of Station One is going to have to. I see that continuing. I don't, I don't see Station One as being static. I, I understand why we need to look at it, saying, we're gonna run out of place in Scottville, but there's only so much rain left, okay?
Correct.
But what's happening on sixty? We've got, on Monday, we've got a project we're looking at that could cause paramount of exposure to Station One. And we, yeah, so I just, the point is, I see the, the need of Station One.
We're all guests, I got that.
Right, okay.
You love speculation.
Love speculation, okay. I see that expanding, more likely to expand than I see in any other place in the county other than your area. Okay, I see, I see that, okay, but I don't see with by right development, major hunks of land, numbers of houses coming online, just don't clear that. If we change that, the whole equation changes.
And finish?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with you, and I think you bring up a very, a couple of really good points. I think that the, the, the activity on Route Sixty that we'll be discussing Monday of development on Route Sixty, I think that becomes a, a much more significant issue. I do think, and I'm glad you brought up, we haven't had any major developments of housing developments in ten years in Powhatan County. That may be shocking to some people, but I think the last one that the information I got was about two-thousand-and-three, large subdivision that was, that was developed.
Was it in Tillman?
It was.
Yep.
And the, I guess that, I'm not arguing your point with you, I'm agreeing with you. And, and, and we need to find a way to do both.
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that's the thing, we need to find a way to do both. And when I start, it, this is probably one of those comments, maybe like this comment, it might not be very popular, but it, you know, if you're gonna drive an engine, and I've never done it, I don't know, but if you're gonna drive an engine down Route Sixty, can you operate that engine at a little bit higher speed than if you're going down five-twenty-two?
No, you operate it relatively the same speed.
Same speed, no matter what? You're on a two-lane road versus.
With traffic lights, we have a traffic preemption signal so we can try, we can attempt to turn lights green.
Yeah, I like.
So it helps, helps move us along, we don't have to worry about that all the time.
Right, so if I'm on five-twenty-two, a two-lane road, and I'm in an engine, I can drive just as fast as I can if I'm on Route Sixty on a four-lane.
And just so you know, our engines are topped out at sixty-five miles.
Got a little governor on them?
Yes.
I, I, I'm good. I, I, I'm fine. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a statement.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
The conversation focuses around the plan, so. I mean, really, you know, if you go back and listen to our comments, what do we need today? What are we looking at the future? Are we doing today this far and from our future in some capacity or in some way? And the answer is, going back to, what's the plan? And we've had this conversation before about where coverage is needed. I remember when we had, where Phil Two come in. It was a question about whether or not we need to proper for a fire station. Remember it very well. So wherever we go with this discussion that we're having right now, it comes back to, what is it that we're looking for in the future? Where is it gonna be? And what is going to cost? And how does that fit in during ten years here? Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carmine.
Question in front of us, are we gonna go ahead? I mean, we gotta, we gotta have some, I'm prepared to support this for them to go ahead and send this out to bid.
Hey, I don't think Mr. Latch is here, I don't think he's had that big of a deal. I, I'm, I'm not gonna be in favor of that. Everybody else can say what they wanna say. What do you wanna do, Mr.?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Are you in favor of sending this out or what?
In favor of sending this out.
Sending it out, yeah.
Okay.
I, I am too, and again, I would like my comments to accompany my opinion on what to do today.
It's not gonna be achieved.
Yes, sir.
So we'll, we'll have to schedule a public hearing for this at the November regular meetings, that gives us about a month and a half, and there are some good questions and dialogues that we can work on, getting some more information on some of these things as well. We'll get any opportunities to maybe value engineer the project some between now and then, and room for improvement, but we can at least keep it moving if we schedule that public hearing and get some feedback from the public as well on their thoughts.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
So now we'll look at the Turner Concessions projects and also have a brief presentation here that they will run us through. And here, I don't know that the information you packed, it illustrated it that well, basically three options that relate to the site. So we have a base, base, is a base estimate that would be kind of the bare minimum size, and the engineers also looked into phases larger as well to give us additional space for growth in the future, with a lot of the cost in that, not changing with the size of the buildings, mostly the construction cost itself. So we would recommend what we call in here the alternate two, which is the largest footprint of those, that give us the most, most room for now and growth in the future, but we could work with and support any of those. Mr. Hay, you'll run us through some of the history on it, and again, the difference between each of those proposals in front of you here. Yes, similarly, this one, again, today, we're just looking for feedback on, are we okay going ahead, schedule a public hearing, and then you would have to approve this in November.
So we start with similar information on this project as with Company One expansion. This is the history of the Turner Park concessions facility in the CIP over time. So in fiscal year twenty-sixteen is the first time that the project appears in the CIP, and it's, it's planned for an out year, but the project estimate is four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. You can see in fiscal year twenty-eighteen, the project estimate increases to over five-hundred-thousand dollars. It decreases again in twenty-nineteen, it increases again in fiscal year twenty, and ultimately, the project's approved in fiscal year twenty-two at three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. This is a timeline of the projects since the board authorized A&E services to begin, and that authorization came in January of this year. And as you see in the stair steps up there, what we plan to complete the design process in this calendar year, and this, this project would be ready for bid in January of twenty-twenty-four. So as Brett was mentioning, the architect is designing this project in, in kind of a small, medium, and large option, and the thinking there is to keep as many options available for the county when we get actual hard costs back. So in the, the circle number there in red over the next three slides, that's the only number that'll change into these estimates. So a lot of cost of the project is, is baked in with components of the project that are not the construction of the building. You see the installing of pump station enforcement is gonna be over two-hundred-thousand dollars, anticipating the site work to be over two-hundred-thousand dollars, and then the A&E expenses were just over, just under a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So for that base bid, that small option, we're looking at a total project cost of eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars and change, which puts the shortfall amount at five-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars and change. This is the add alternate number one option, the medium option. You can see the building size there on the, the left-hand side. You gain some square footage, you gain some covered area, and then you see where the construction cost increases, so the total project becomes just over a million dollars with a project shortfall of seven-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars and change. The, the add alternate number two, which is that biggest building option, you see the change in, in square foot and significant change in covered area. The building cost increases to a hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. The total project cost becomes one-point-one million dollars with a total shortfall amount of eight-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars and change. I wanted to include a slide two, just to recognize and appreciate the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, who's been very involved in this project. They've met with stakeholder groups to discuss both needs of the facility and, and future of Turner Park, and also met with the, the A&E team throughout this process, both on the building and in the master plan.
Mr. Carmine, go ahead. I'm just at a total loss. I'm sorry, I don't have enough information. Based in four area of eleven-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet, that doesn't mean anything. I don't know what you're doing there, okay? I don't know how it compares to our Fighting Creek facility, what's going on there, how well that works, and then you have two more layers, if you will, that increase the cost. I just, I don't know what I'm getting on the base, okay? And I don't know how the changes as, as it gets larger and what the value of that is and why we should do it. I just don't have enough information to render an opinion, that's kind of where I'm at. I need, I need help.
And I can, I can give a little detail, but probably follow-up will, will be helpful too, and we can, we can get you some floor plans, but the, the base bid really involves just two of the three functions that Prak especially heard from the user groups, a kitchen and bathrooms. It's the second floor plan, the, the second floor plan, that medium option, that begins to incorporate storage, and in the third footprint, you get, you get the kitchen, the bathroom, and store at the full build-out, you know, what.
I'm sorry, what is the third?
It's still the kitchen, bathrooms, and storage, and, and you get those at a, at an increased footprint, an increased size.
Okay, the first, the base bid is kitchen and bathroom, then alternate number one adds storage to kitchen and bathroom, and number, alternate number two, sounds like it's the restatement of number one.
It has. Yeah, it has a larger kitchen, more storage, and, and a bathroom, and then the big game there is in, in covered area. There would be a covered area that would allow picnic tables and folks to order food and the like, under shelter from rain or weather.
Do you have enough facility, right?
At Turner Park there, yeah.
No, 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 I play it too.
Yes.
What size is it?
So the, the architect that's designing this building is the architect that designed the Fighting Creek Park concession stand, and so that add alternate two, which is that large option, is based on the footprint of Fighting Creek Park's concession stand.
Fighting Creek Park would be alternate two?
Right, that largest footprint. Essentially, what he did is he took the, the area that's committed to the stairway and removed that from the first floor layout of that concession stand. So, so you, you lose that stairway area, changed the roof from a hip roof to a cable roof, but other than that, very, very similar to the Fighting Creek Park concession stand.
Why did we not, why do we have three of them? Why didn't we just duplicate? First of all, Fighting Creek working well in terms of what we hoped it to do?
Yes.
It has enough space? Kitchen's large enough, the bathrooms are fine?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we have a, a new concessions vendor that's very much learning the kitchen space. The county had a long-time concession vendor that, no complaints, and he performed well. We had a short interim vendor, got some feedback about the size of the fryers and some of the electrical hookup, but two seem to, to tell with the third version.
But it's, so that footprint has been successful for this one.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmine.
The concession stand, who runs them? Who gets the proceeds? How, how does that work? How are they?
Yeah.
How's that work?
So at Fighting Creek Park, the, they kinda put out RFP and got proposals back and And so private groups run that concession stand. And then the county re-putting in 10%, 15% of the revenue.
Okay.
From those stands. Right now, the concession stand at Turner Park is run by the leagues. And that's really a function of the amenities, you know? There's, there's not the same level of equipment. I think that Megan and I have talked, I think it's kind of an open question for us about what that would look like. I think that we're open to see that a new vendor at Fighting Creek Park being successful both for themselves and for that to be a revenue source for Parks and Recreation. So that's what we're evaluating right now.
Okay. So by Turner Park, you would do kind of the RFP there and hope that, have you had a hard time getting people to commit to running it?
We haven't. We've got, the first time we sent it out, I think we got two proposals. The second time that we sent it out, I think just one, but it's a Palatine-based business. They do, this is what they do, they cater and boot up. And it seems to be a really good fit.
That kind of brings me up, they cater and run a food truck. I kind of maybe better off to get food trucks and just build a bathroom. Yeah, I'm just, you know, kind of throwing some different ideas out. I mean, if these places are kind of outsourced, you know, kind of companies, you definitely need bathrooms. There's no doubt, maybe a small kitchen or something like that. But I'm just thinking, you know, food trucks are more of the rage than a concession stand type thing. Any times have changed since, you know?
Yeah.
Started looking at this, just an alternative, that's all.
There weren't any food trucks then.
Yes, exactly, there weren't. We went to the, you know? Just do that.
Yes, sir. Because I've been on the advisory committee with everybody. Twenty conversations from the, everybody of this Turner Park, three years it's been neglected and it's fallen down. So it's really needed. All the groups out there, they desperately want this. As far as what size we get, it's been a lot, so. But it's definitely needed to build a community. Just like White Creek is, is desperately needed at Turner Park. That's a busy place on the weekend, really busy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any problem with the project, it's just question of size.
Right, correct. Correct. I will Oh, Steve, I don't know if that plot was even there when humor coming up. Certainly wasn't me, you probably curse girls often. Talk about how something looks in the village and how you want it to look. That's an embarrassment to Palatine County, Fighting Creek Park, or not Fighting Creek, Turner Field. That's an embarrassment. I would hate to see the health department go there, to be frank with you. I like the food truck idea, but I kind of think, my own personal opinion, food trucks are probably a trendy thing. They're going to be here and they're going to be gone. I do think that sports, athletics are a booming thing. You look at Henrico, you look at Chesterfield, that's where they're, they're getting into that. They're focused because they know the opportunities that are coming now. I think we're in a great place with this particular situation. With Fighting Creek Park, there's just, there's an endless amount of opportunities there. And I'm going to bring this up again, I'm not going to be on the board next year, but I'm going to bring this up again for those of you who will be on this board. There's a lot of timber at Fighting Creek Park that's been valued at over $200,000. That's a lot of money. That can help the taxpayers, the citizens, the county, the kids, the participants. Keep that in mind as these decisions get made. My observations with Fighting Creek Park, I don't want to keep calling it, Turner Fields, I think our fields that are there, that's what they're, they're not going to be any more fields there. Property owners around there, I don't see them giving up their land to create any more fields. Fighting Creek Park, there's going to be more fields, there's a lot of land and a lot of opportunity. I know from people that I've talked to related to Turner Field and what's gone on there in the concession stand, the wood sheds that's been there for 20 years, that they put equipment in that has every insect known to mankind crawling around in it. We should probably take that into consideration. I'm going to ask this question, because when I look at the fire department, and not to muddy the water a little bit, I'm going to get back to it. If I read my packet the right way, the money to pay for these projects, even with the increases that's there, if these increases are the correct increase, that's a big if. What they total up to, we have the funding to pay for both of these projects based upon doing the base bid on Turner Field. Am I right?
We have the funding, whether you wish to do the base bid or the larger one, we have funding available to do that first.
I think it passed, page three. You know, I guess my point there would be with Turner Field, I think you have a storage problem. I think you can have a little funding come in, it helps Parks and Rec. You know, five board members, we could all have different opinions on what the negotiated contract price is and what you're getting out of that. But there's opportunities to make, bring funding in to help offset some of the cost for Parks and Rec in knowing what's out there and what's available and how that works. It's a lot of people that gather at both places on the weekends. You have softball going on, you have baseball going on, you have lacrosse, you have soccer. There's a lot of activity that goes on there. I'm not sure I'm in favor of the most expensive one. I'd probably be more in favor of alternate one in regards to that because I don't see that area getting any bigger. I don't see there being more fields there in the future. I think you have one, two, three, four, is it four fields there? Yeah, four fields there now, and then you have a rectangular, five? Yeah, the rectangular field, right. I like diamonds. The couple people got that one. The, we're not going to expand that, I don't see that happening. And actually, you know, if you like, think in the future a little bit, maybe the administration office expands, maybe the partner line, the administration office expands. And that takes up some more of that rectangular field space. But from my perspective, if I'm going to do one of these, that's what I would do, would be alternate one. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Crown.
One thing that kind of, I guess bothers me a little bit about the way we're doing this. And again, like you, obviously not going to be on the board next year, but for future board members, I think it would be better if somehow we just do this whole process backwards. Like here, we kind of put these ballpark numbers out of what we think it's going to cost. And then we come to the meeting, well, we think it's going to cost more, so, you know, we throw in another $2 million. We throw in another half a million dollars. Then we're going to go out to bid, and we're going to go to X, Y, Z company. And how many times, if you go to a company and you say, well, we have $4.2 million to spend, do you think they're going to come in less than that? So we kind of give up our hand right now upfront, tell them, nobody will be. I can tell you right now, none of these are going to come in less. None, because we already told people what we're going to spend. Instead of having it backward, we want this, 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 our budget is, it's sort of like building a house. You know, you have a budget of, you know, $750,000. That's what you have to keep in, you keep within, not go back and say, well, I don't really have a budget. We just keep throwing money at it and expect them to, you know, come in under that. That's not going to happen, because guaranteed, these companies do research, they look at CIPs. They know what we've discussed. So I just think going forward, if you could kind of maybe hone it in as to what you want to spend as opposed to the methodology we've done in the past. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I agree with that comment completely. Kind of like figuring out, you know, the budget and the tax rate. Which comes first? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
We've got to give a recommendation. You've got alternate number one is your pick.
I did.
I'll support that.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that.
That's three. I support it.
Ms. Wade? You okay with voting on the board? Is that going to give you guys a little? And I see that one of the members are here, so thank you for your participation and guidance and expertise and valued opinions that go forward in helping us make these decisions.
And feel with the list.
By the way, relax. There's some good contractors involved in doing that, I know that. Mr. Chairman?
Last old business item, CIP. So you've already adopted FY24 CIP. Official adoption of FY25 CIP will be something that we do through this budget process with the next board. But now that we have some year-end numbers, it would be helpful to just update you on the model. And if you wish, kind of run through the CIP as it stands and see as we hand this off to the next board, if there's any changes or tweaks you all want to make, or questions you have on it. So we're moving forward in the best shape. But again, this is just a review, there's no actual action needs to take place tonight related to the CIP. So Mr. Bo, walk us through a brief presentation on this.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Just like to surmise the FY24 CIP that was approved by you all last, last year. In FY24, a total of $9.8 million or so was approved for the CIP in various categories, it's listed there. Funding sources at the bottom include grants, profits, and other. Has the largest funding source, 3.4 million or so. Then about 2.5 million from the general fund, 2.1 million from CBTA. We had $876,000 in bus leases, $735,000 in debt for fire apparatus, as well as $242,000 from school operating, funding some of their CIP. Moving on to the next.
Okay. You have a funding source of 2.122 mil for CBTA funding, okay? I don't see any CBTA projects. That's got pincers around. I mean, it's not listed above, right? Am I missing something?
Maybe one of those categories, one second.
It's probably in Public Works.
Yes.
It's under Public Works.
Yeah, it's under Public Works. Yes, sir. That would be project 27 in Public Works. CBTA roads, PW27. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jumping into the next slide, which is on some fund balance projections. Finance took upon itself to start a new financial model from the ground up using year-end 23 numbers, using those numbers as well as collaboration with various stakeholders, including Jamie Timmerley as well as some folks in community development, as well as internal finance. We projected the 10-year period of the CIP. It's, you'll notice that it is different from what was presented last year with last year's numbers. But that's kind of the nature of an updated forecast. Every year with new numbers, we'll get different growth rates, and it'll update accordingly. Along with that, the additional cost for the fire station as well as the concession stand are already incorporated in these projections as well as the existing 10-year CIP as it is today. The, and 69 cents in
69, okay.
Yes, sir. The green line at the top represents the fund balance as if we didn't have any debt service. That includes existing debt service and any new debt service that's been baked in into the 10-year CIP. The orange line is the projected fund balance, and the blue line is our 15% of revenue minimum requirement. And the difference of that is the surplus essentially. And the following slides is mostly supplemental information, including the FY24 total list of projects, including a breakdown of some of the funding sources. And the remaining slides in this presentation is a summary of the 10-year CIP, as well as some funding sources there as well. We can jump right into questions. It's a fairly simple presentation, just one for the center.
Any questions along the way, just pipe up, huh?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, are there questions?
Yes, sir.
CBTA funds, are we ensuring an actual project against those revenues?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what page is that?
In the packet.
He wants to say in the CIP, so.
Oh, yes, it's in the CIP as well.
This is the project.
Page 45.
Each 45.
Page 45.
Oh, we got to, that is
We don't have a specific
There's not, there's not specifics.
Let me, let me follow up with my question. There is no specific roads or roads being listed.
No, sir.
The only thing we're showing is we have the revenue from CBDA taxes back to us.
Correct.
We haven't, I'm looking at these projects, it just says, you just showed me, Charlotte, it says roads.
Right, projects haven't actually been specifically designated at this point. It's a holding place for that money. We transferred over and we put it in one bucket. And then as you guys decide what transportation or things come up with the county administrator, we'll come to you and ask to use that money for those roads. Sure. We haven't, we haven't
I'm digesting what you just said.
So when this all started, collecting this money?
Let me just finish my thought here.
Okay.
Typically, what we will show is a project, and we will show the underlying revenue associated with the project. This, we're showing the revenues, and we're leaving blank at the top, roads. And we're going to fill that in as if we're going to each year come up with projects or roads against the 2.1 million as is shown here. I'm just, is that what, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Does that confuse y'all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like my memory at all.
We voted on some of them.
We did vote on some things, we did.
That cost money.
I thought we said Holly Hills.
District two, Turnley.
Right, yeah.
Voted on it.
Okay, I'm just
You're on it.
All right.
And those are
I said all time was checked.
Yeah. In the general ledger, I have sub-projects after you've approved that, where we put those in there. And I am accounting for that. If you, if we, if we need to go back and then make separate projects, but they're coming throughout the year after this book has been adopted. So it's, I don't know how to explain it, it's just, it was created, it was a thought process to create, to move the money and put it into one bucket, and then you guys, we pay from that bucket as you come up with what transportation projects you want to approve. Does that make sense? But they shouldn't be listed. They are in the GL, I can tell you. I have them in the general ledger, but if you want me to list them here, we can go back and change. It's just, we can't now, it's just if, when we're doing this and say we've adopted in June or May, and in November you create a project, is the anticipation that we redo the book every time the project?
You'd need to make an amendment to that book, make an amendment to the book. You don't have to redo the whole book.
You amend it 10 years.
I didn't have that direction at the time.
So we're spending $2,122,000 on projects.
We're not spending that, it is just sitting there in a, it is, it's an appropriation and sitting there, but we're not spending anything until you tell us we can spend it.
Well, we told you to spend Holly Hills, so we can take, how much is that?
Well, that'll be in 2028. Sorry, just being a little bit facetious there, because Sorry, just being a little bit facetious there, because we have said it. It's been said, we just need to get it done, and you're exactly right. When we, when we vote on it, we do it. Let's do it, you know, push the envelopes, write the check, get it done.
That's the only way we're going to estimate it.
Exactly. Yes, sir, Ms. Swede.
If we're showing now each year equal to the revenue we anticipate bringing in from CBTA, and we're showing that across the bottom, and across the top, there's no projects. But we're saying we're going to spend that amount of money in that particular year, each year, for unknown projects. That's the way I interpret the CIP.
We have, it's probably been two years ago now that we brought a list to you of projects, and we worked through them and how, how they would flow with the incoming and outgoing CBTA money. So we have that list. At this point, it's getting a little dated, so we need to bring that back to you again and make sure, update the cost, but we do have a.
Going back to my politics and media comments, Brett, was, yeah, we had voted on these things. We had two projects that we said we were going to do. To me, in my way of looking at it, we should have had these projects listed as pages on public works.
We can start to show it that way, yeah.
Okay. Now, my next question is, when we're doing the totaling, putting total revenue sources against total expenditures, and we're using the CBTA funds, and we're showing those as revenues, are we including those in revenue totals? And we're going against a total amount that's being shown for expenditures, yet we're not showing, I don't believe, any expenditures for these roads? Are the CBTA funds being used to offset some other things? Okay, that was, that's just my question. I just wanted to make sure.
We want to make sure what you're saying, Ms. Swede, these funds, which are transportation funds, are being used for transportation. So one of the things that I remember, of course, is the Holly Hills, as we all did. The other thing about CBTA funds, another point, I think, is have you guys allocated some of those funds to, and we voted, I'm pretty sure we voted on it, to supplement the smart scale project at Juice Fair. We voted to put, there was a shortfall there, and we voted to use some of our CBTA funds. I've said that, was that, was that how it works? So wasn't.
Technically part of the surplus of capital maintenance reserve at the time. We did not vote to use CBTA funds at the time. Doesn't mean we can't.
Change that, right. So we could go back and use CBTA funds, post a fund balance money on that, if we wanted to do that.
And these two, both that $1.1 million for the Juice Fair and the amount for Holly Hills as well. Those were the placeholder, isn't the right word, but that in authorizing us to use those funds, we said, if we can't find something else, we continue to apply for things, regional competitive grants, things like that, we just applied, I think, a week.
But regional surplus and.
We applied last, I think, in September as well for that. So if we get other funds that are non-county, then we'll supplement that, and then we'll use this for something else. But kind of worst case, we're prepared to use these funds. We're still working through some of that to see if we can not even have to use our little money, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go to page little number 25. This is the definition of capital. What is it?
In your CIP book, it's page one past the if you look at the
You look at the left.
If you get to the actual CIP. Keep going.
Now, CIP, useful life of 15 years to a project cost of at least $25,000. That's where, that's the ticket to get into the CIP. If you go to page 84. So S0012. This is Division One Initiative. There are several items we need throughout the divisions, kitchen equipment, carpet, painting, cafeteria, furniture. These are maintenance items. They shouldn't be in our CIP. They have amalgamated, okay, and thrown all of this in. This is, this is, this is not CIP, and we do it, we do it also with our fluorescent lights, the LEDs. We get $10,000. It doesn't, it doesn't need.
Yeah, I agree in that definition, but that's why in parts of ours, we call it other capital program. And I probably need to update definition, and we can put some of those in the operating fund, but, you know, that's just where we.
But the CIP, when I have a CIP definition, we need to use it and make that barrier for departments or divisions that are trying to avoid their maintenance costs amalgamating toward a CIP.
Yeah, I would like to point out with that Division One initiative, they're paying for that out of their operating funds. That's not being paid by any capital projects funds. They just, they throw that in their own CIP and say they're paying for it out of their school operating fund. So we can exclude those pages from ours if you would prefer on the school side for all those little things.
If they can do it for operating.
The funding source for that is your school operating funds, and they use some of their school construction fund money, which I do keep in my fund, but they are allowed to use that school construction money they got to pay for all of these things.
They can't use the capital maintenance for the school capital things, we certain unless we approve it.
No, sir, and none of that in that page was from any of those sources.
I just would like, if we look, if we look at these projects, we don't amalgamate them, make them need this, that they, they're either a capital program item or not, that's all.
Any other comments, questions, points? I think the the margin surplus to that page, I think that's an interesting page that, as Mr. Cox pointed out, that was all based upon Mr. Bo confirmed a 69 cent real estate tax rate. And I think you have surplus there going out, even with the CIP. The interesting thing is, I was sitting here looking at that, we just, if I understood this right, we just kind of said, let's talk about $2.98 million, $2,980,000 for a fire fire station, renovations, additions, Turner concessions, fundings, and operating. That's almost $3 million that we're still in under our 69 cents, and we're still got a little balance here showing surplus 10 years out on our CIP. So I think that's, that's very good for Palatine County and, you know, how the money's been managed. What's next, sir?
That's it?
Okay, great. That'll bring us right to our final public comment period. The floor is open if anyone from the public would like to speak. Just state your name and address. Boogie Rock.
I'm Amy People, Director of Parks Recreation.
That's good.
And and soon to be address on Palatine Lakes Road. Anyway, I just had a couple of, just a little bit of feedback from the conversation earlier about Turner concessions. I need some notes while we all are chatting. So I surveyed parks and recreation departments across the nation to get a feel for what the current concession stand trends are in relation to concessional concession stands versus are they using food trucks and that kind of thing? And the feedback unanimously was that they do stick within current, the traditional concession stands. And Palatine Fastpitch, their affiliated league that runs the softball program, they currently are selling concessions at the Turner concession stand, and they use the proceeds from sales as a fundraiser for their program. And so with the building of a new facility, that would be a conversation that we would revisit in the future. Palatine Fastpitch, like I said, they're a county affiliated softball league. They hosted two state tournaments this summer at Turner Complex in July. And the tournaments require a temperature-controlled room for officials. And so that was, you know, in the design, where Fighting Creek Park has two storage facilities, one of the storage rooms we could use as that temperature-controlled space for officials for when they do those tournaments. And then I would just say to that, that this summer, the county provided additional portage on units for the tournament, since the current facility can't handle the load. And the new concession stand location will be at a more centralized location to connect with rectangular field that's primarily used at this time by lacrosse. And just to confirm, that 15% of net sales is paid to the county from the vendor, from the concessions vendor at Fighting Creek. And as the Parks and Recreation Department grows, we're making the best use of our green space within our existing facilities and park properties that we own. So we're planning on using master planning to transform our sports complexes into parks that will serve more citizens across the board than just youth sports. So the master plan for Turner Park will include trails, dog park, and a playground, and this is a trend that we hope to implement throughout our other existing sports complexes as they're known now, but actually turning them into parks. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Megan. We'll close public comment period. County Administrator comments?
No comments this evening.
Board comments?
Have, sure. Did anybody see how many people was at the pavilion at the Village Park, we gave homecoming pictures? There was a lot of people there to get their pictures done. If you go Facebook and look at all the pictures of the gazebo, the Fight Creek Park, I don't know how many people's pictures there, but it was a lot. There was a lot of people to get the picture done at the gazebo. It was good.
Sounds like it was the same experience that happened with the Palm last, in the spring.
I told Maggie to see the charge admission to that. It's a lot of photo.
Well, it is. Actually, that was our plan. That was our grand plan, and we just don't have our sign yet that says hashtag Palatine Parks and Rec.
The, anybody else got anything? I'll be real quick with my comments, because this is something that, as I'm going through, I know that the county is working on the appraisals for the Eastern Convenience Center. But it's been a very slow process. I think it was August the 15th. You know, on that night, it was said it would be a couple of weeks before we get these appraisals, and everybody can tell where we are. Can we get a little bit of an update as to when we're going to be able to talk about this Eastern Convenience Center?
Yeah, I'll, actually, while we were sitting here, gather requests from the appraisal for more information. So they got us appraisals on time, but they were, I think we requested three different appraisals. One, just as properties, they, no assumptions, just exactly the way they are. Then one, assuming the future road is constructed, properties are rezoned, kind of looking at their highest and best future use. And then appraisal for just the value of the right of way if we were to purchase or condemn property for that. So they got us one, it was a, they gave us one appraisal that was a version of kind of that second one with some assumptions, but some that we had some feedback on, we went back and said, our original proposal, we need three separate numbers. We said, okay. Wants different information on the area of Wetland and Buffer around there, some more information on details of the road, how long, how wide, how much right of way, all of that, so we provided that. And then so I got an email come in where they were requesting some more information, more clarification on that. Look at that later and see what that was. So hopefully that's the last bit of information maybe from us to complete them. And we discussed rather than doing a full news and medals, because the base one they did covers most of the information, most of the research comps, things they needed to do, don't change. So they just issued these other ones as kind of an update or a supplemental letter, here's the values we propose. So trying to keep it simple and cost-effective. So I'll look back at what they asked for this evening and get a timeline from them. We've encouraged them that, you know, we want to turn it around as quickly as possible so we can make these important decisions. So that's where we are, and should be able to talk to them tomorrow and get a better ETA for one of those final appraisals.
Awesome.